We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting on January 22nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Hauser?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for coming out on a wintry night. We will go to public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled, and to start off, we have a presentation by Pat McKay to update the city council on the museum archive project. Pat, welcome.
Thank you. I have to remember how... This is what I was expecting. So I don't know what to do.
Oh, you've got to get to your slides.
I don't want to kick somebody off the Zoom call.
Anthony's coming. Anthony's coming.
You won't. I don't... I mean, Anthony, that's it.
We have our tech person here.
For rescuing me. Got you covered. We're getting a history museum. I'm not used to seeing this kind of...
It's fine. You're good.
Did you already put the next one over to the left? This one? That one? Thank you. Appreciate you talking to me. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Banda, and some members of the city council. My name is Pat McKay, and I'm here to update you on, I guess, the relationship and the collaboration that we have between the museum and the city of Rochester. A year ago, we were here working on some archival preservation agreements that we were working on, and that has evolved a little bit more where we have your support for some of our museum operation. And I have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you, and I have extra copies back here in case the public wants more. Our museum facility, half of it's in Rochester Hills, half of it's in the city of Rochester. Our houses, we have the Van Hooen Farmhouse, the Red House, and the Schoolhouse are all in the city of Rochester Hills. All of our barn buildings and most of our open space are in the city of Rochester. So we have 16 acres altogether and kind of a remarkable collection of beautiful buildings all listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So we're happy that the facility straddles the borders between our two communities. What we've been doing over the last few years is trying to build this partnership so that we have help to do the projects that we think tell us the complete story of Rochester and Rochester Hills. We are a community that is so intertwined that it's impossible to draw boundaries when it comes to the history of the site. I listed a whole bunch of things there. My favorite one, of course, is the fifth one down where it says, "Various assistance for anything Christie Trevorrow asked us to support for the DVA." And honestly, we would do anything. You know, you see the scarecrows, but we have signs... We have the signs that you see there along Main Street. I think I had that written down. Nine of the... No, that's not... Riverwalk Historic Markers echo between the Paint Creek Trail and the Clinton River Trail. We have six signs there that we've done in a collaboration with a number of other groups. The Historic Markers Downtown, we have 14 of those. We have the Clinton Kalamazoo Canal signs that run roughly from the South Hill Bridge all the way to Yates Sutter Mill along the Clinton River Trail. And then, you know, just a whole lot of other activities where we are trying to bring guests into downtown Rochester and promote the history of the community. Through the museum, we get about 60,000 guests a year. So it's walking tours. Every second grader comes through the downtown Rochester where we teach economics to second graders. And so, and always working on another publication that keeps documenting the story. And that was the whole idea behind getting your archival materials, that we could document the story. And I apologize. Before I go any further, Tabitha Masters is here with us today. Tabitha is the archive intern that you've hired that works at the museum. Tabitha graduated from Stony Creek High School, so she's one of our local grown talent here. And did her bachelor's degree at Central Michigan University and is wrapping up a master's degree in library science with an archival certificate through Wayne State University. It's a super great program. And so we're... So she is becoming an expert on local history, more than anybody else her age probably ever thought they would be. And we have leaned on her, and we actually have her as a part-time employee for the museum too, because she can do tours now. She knows everything. And so Tabitha is here if you have any specific questions about some of the archival material. And in fact, I passed out our finding aid for the items that we have so far processed. That is, Tabitha has done everything on that. Did you grade the finding guide?
Oh, this.
Okay. Okay. Tabitha is our second intern in this position here, and I do have extra copies. And this is... Everything we do is online, so we don't... There's nothing that we really are trying to hide. Here's a couple of other things that we're working on right now that are pretty exciting. So we are maintaining, through this partnership, this intern position that's helping us process not only the Rochester Historical Commission, but many other local organizations. Like, for instance, the Stony Creek Masonic Lodge that's based on Walnut Street. It's the oldest Masonic Lodge in the state of Michigan. Of course, it's in the Rochester area. And we have all their records. So it's from Masonic history, we are... We have it all. We have Masonic groups from all over the country that ask us about the Masonic history. We also do some of the records now for Dinosaur Nature Preserve. They're coming up on an anniversary this year, and so we're helping them digitize all their photo albums that somebody has been carefully collecting for years. Paint Creek Center for the Arts, and any business that we can find, we will take those records. We don't want those records to disappear. We don't want them to go to Florida if somebody moves down there. We don't want them thrown into a dumpster. We strive very hard to get those. One of the other things we're working on is the greenery with the old Rochester elevator. We have had some initial conversations with Dominic Tringalia about how that building is going to be used. And we have, from the museum, we have some selfish needs that we are pointing out to them that we hope really works out to a neat private-public-public partnership between a private developer, the city of Rochester, and the city of Rochester Hills to use that building. Our selfish needs are, I have 5,000 second graders that I take through the downtown Rochester, as well as many, many, many tours, whether bike tours or walking tours. We have very few places to seek shelter in case the weather turns on us, and we have very few places to use public restrooms. And we're wondering if we can make this work inside this building. And they would have... It's a smaller space, but there might be a place just big enough for a classroom of second graders where we could use that and do some interpretation both inside the building and outside the building. So anybody walking around on an evening in downtown Rochester would be able to walk around this building and enjoy some of the history, our agricultural history. We've had one or two meetings with them, and we're just optimistic at this point. I'll just say that. So we're working on... I think we're keeping you posted on everything going on there. And then Steve's going to help me with this other program. One of your residents here, Julia Johnson, who's on the Rochester Beautiful Committee, lives in one of the houses right here on Madison, and she said, last year, she was celebrating a birthday of her house. And you know Julia because she's on the committee.
Yeah, I know her, yeah.
And she wanted a banner that she could hang on her house to celebrate that there's a birthday at her house. And so she actually started designing this. I had our city's sign shop make one, and we may need more because there may be simultaneously we'll have many buildings celebrating birthday, and you can switch the year. And so I gave my only copy to Steve Sage, who said he was bringing it tonight. Steve, you can take it from here, okay?
I wanted to thank you, Pat, because this is one of the more successful projects that the Historical Commission has embarked upon, the historic home markers. And this collaboration is going to solidify that. We really appreciate it, and I will bring it down. And Nick, can we hang it in the lobby? Okay, to get some more support to that. So you'll see that here soon.
So the idea is that if a resident can justify that their house or their business is a certain age, we're guessing, the 120 is a movable number. We can change that. They might be able to string it up on their porch. There's grommets everywhere so we can pull it nice and tight and maybe keep it for a year or six months, or however the Historical Commission thinks it can work. I've never seen this program anywhere else, so it's just a way to celebrate ourselves, I think, more than anything, and realize how old some of these houses really are and the effort that any resident has to take to maintain these. And with all the businesses on Main Street, too. I don't remember, Steve, the dimensions. Three by...
Three by five.
Three by five, maybe, so. And I said, "We can make more if that's necessary." So it's just a neat program, and we're hoping that we'd kick it off this year, that we'd start celebrating some cool things. We are working on a couple of things, and anything I say here or look at, you can look at Tabitha because she's probably doing some of this work, transcribing the Villager Rochester Minute Books. I was just talking to Leanne about that. And at some point, some of these projects, some of these books that we will help clean and transcribe, and then we will give them back because Leanne needs some of these books back as part of your official records. One of the new things that we just did, the Clio. The Clio is an app that you can get on your phone, and it gives you the history of any community. There's 31,000 entries throughout the United States, and there's about 150 in the Rochester area. And so we have... Your neighbor up the road here, who just... Julia Johnson, she said, "I love my house. It's great, but I don't know enough about it." And so we found a local researcher, Debbie Larson. And you know, Julie, we were just talking about her. She's our expert researcher in town. And so I connected those two together so we could research the history of that house and then put it on this website. So really what I'm doing is putting myself out of business for walking tours. At some point, you'll be able to, with an app on your phone, which is free, you can take a tour not only of Rochester, but of Akron, Ohio, or any town that you're in. You just open the app. It finds where you are, and it starts telling you all the sources. And it also cites all the source materials, so you can reference it and archivally pair it all up. And that's why it's nice to have all these things that Tabitha is finding for us. And then we're also... For 40 years, we've been documenting, and anytime we find a shred of piece of information about any building or any house in Rochester, we have a file on that. And we're in the process of digitizing all those files, and we'll put those online, too. So you could look up any address on Main Street or any street in Rochester, and if we have a file on it, we will put that online. So that's what the support does for us. It allows us just to get all this information. Otherwise, it's sitting in an archival box in a dark room, and we're safely safeguarding it, but we're not sharing it. And that's really ultimately what we're trying to do over and over again. So the Clio is a neat app. And in fact, I was saying at some point, we might need to advertise that, the Clio, on a website so people enter the city to say, "Check it out." Because our history is everywhere. I can't put a sign up in front of every single house. It's just, it's impossible. But electronically, you know, this is really the way to go. And then we can update that information, too, whenever we find more information or archival images, or one more shred of information that we find in our Rochester-era newspapers and all that, too. Our newspaper collection still continues to be probably the most important thing that we've ever done. We digitized all the newspapers from Rochester from 1872 to 1972. The last batch has not been uploaded yet. We're having issues. It's a collaborative website called Oakland County Historical Resources, OCHR. And we do it through the libraries. It's a partnership that we have in Rochester. It's all the libraries, historical societies, and museums in Oakland County share one website. And it's been temperamental. It was very temperamental over the holidays. I only know that because a lot of people were sitting at home trying to research their family genealogies, and the website was down. And so that became problematic. But the problem is, our website is not big enough for the city of Rochester Hills to house all the material we have on it. It's a project out of the Orient Township Library. Is that right, Julia? So it's a great... In the lower left, there's a picture of Tabitha adding some of your material inside display cases. We still deal with slide projectors. I have several slide projectors if you ever need a slide projector. The gentleman in the picture is John Boebert. He's a member of Rochester City Council for many, many years. He worked at Twist Grill, and he led the Centennial Celebration in 1969 and published the book called The Lively Town. Anyway, he worked at Twist Grill. So it's... We think great things are happening, and right now, there's some agreement and partnerships, I think. Mr. Banda and Ken Alwerth from the city are working on that, making sure, attorneys are making sure that's all working. But I'm here just to let you know things are going great. And then I'm required by Michigan State University to still provide an annual report every year because two of our buildings are gifts from them. And then we just throw in the school system and all that because we have a gift for the Schoolhouse that's from the Rochester Community Schools, and we widely share that annual report. That'll be coming up in February. I'll have that ready to share with you and give you the much larger picture of everything that's going on at the museum. So I'm here to answer any questions. If it's really hard or difficult, I'm going to ask Tabitha to respond to it. But we are just so fortunate that your partnership has allowed us to hire somebody talented like this, so we can take projects forward that have been sitting for 20 years, and we can finally start emptying boxes that have been sitting for way too long. So we really appreciate that support. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'll let you move on.
Councilmember Jones?
First off, you came and spoke years ago at Founder's Day for us when I was involved in the PTA, and your energy is amazing. So thank you, and thank you for the work you do there. We're very blessed to have that in our community. I have a 1920 Sears robot comb. I have the catalog page from the catalog. Do you reach out in a way to say... Or do you have so much material you can't keep up with it? Or do you ever put out, like, in the local press? We are looking for... You know, my husband's family own the Hills Theater, so we have a lot of information from that. Do you ever...
Yeah, both of those. Yes, we have lots. We have a backlog of about 15 years.
Okay.
However, that would never stop us from going and getting more information. If we know something's out there, I may... I have been to Pottermo Detts Funeral Home because I knew what somebody had in their possession. I knew I'd meet the family if I was there. So I had to introduce myself at a funeral to say, "I know it's hanging on the wall. I've been in that house before." We think it's something that there's a risk of historical information disappearing because it has. It has disappeared for a century. We will kindly, professionally, seek out that information so we can come up with a partnership. And every partnership we have, whether it's with the garden clubs or the junior women's club, it's an individual partnership with them. It's whatever works for them. Some of them say, "Listen, we want to give you our records, and we don't ever want to see them again. I just want to know that you guys have them." Others say, "We want access. Sometimes we want to pull these records back, and for one of our celebrations, we want to maybe pull something out." And we say, "It's your records. You tell us what you want." It's not... Everything is customized for... Some things that we get are in a Tupperware box, and some of them are in beautiful acid-free boxes. But I'll tell you, some of them was, we had a nice collection from the Rochester Women's Club, and that was really important to us when the library said they're going to start celebrating their 100th anniversary this year, and we have the records of the Rochester Women's Club, which started the library 100 years ago. And so fortunately, that organization still, you know, somebody kept that all these years. And so we're just honored that we have been able to maintain that, and we can tell these stories. And the last year and this year, there are more anniversaries going on in this town where these organizations have been around 50 and 100 years. It's just really remarkable, and it's fun when they call us, and we can jump in and start helping them out a little bit. So thanks for questions and commenting. Yes, I would like everything about the Hills Theater.
All right.
Or copies of it. I can scan it and give you the originals if you're willing to keep them, or I'm happy to keep the originals, too.
Wow, that's great.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I've always been a big fan of yours, and I think people, me personally, appreciates your creativity and how creative you are with history. And no one thinks about that a lot. I mean, all the way back to the calf barn. When I heard you were going to make a calf barn into a conference center, and I'm like, "Wow, how is that going to work?" And it's wonderful. People love it. I mean, to your bike tours, all the touchpoints that you... People don't think that, yeah, this is history, your history now, and there was people before you. I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done. And another thing was when I was jogging, and I saw your little Kalamazoo canal next to the Clinton River, near under the South Bridge, I was like, "Who did this?" And it was you.
Yeah, they've all been stolen twice. So we've had to replace them numerous times.
And you keep putting them up, but it's...
I'm just going to keep doing it. I am going to win.
It's just so impressive. And yes, I'm batting, hopefully, we'll get some restrooms.
And thanks, and you know...
On your bike tours, too. I mean, you know, we need some restrooms in downtown. We're working on it.
I can't do anything about that one.
I know, I know. But with the greenery...
We want every organization to be successful, so whether it's the Rochester Beautiful or if it's a, you know, whether it's dinosaur hill, we...
Yeah, I mean, I saw the book. I did, I saw the scrapbook, one of them. I don't know how many there are, but I have seen one that's floating around for that.
Which is great that somebody took the time to start documenting that. Who knew that this, you know, community-driven nature center would last for 50 years? It's just a remarkable story of Americana, I think, more than anything, when you can see how... You know, and we have a huge documentation of the Rochester Fire Department and the Brooklyn's Fire Department. And all these departments had to figure out the relationships, somehow make it all work and provide, you know, protection to our community. And every one of these stories is significant, and we don't diminish one over another. They all need to be told, and we've really tried hard over the years to really tell the female story in Rochester. We have an incredible story about women entrepreneurs who have changed the course of our town, whether it's Oakland University or the Rochelle's Public Library. I mean, it's just, it's neat to be able to do that. My four daughters and four sisters would be very appreciative, too, that I continue to keep pushing this. But it's... So we have some great stories to tell unlike many other towns around us.
You do. And I wanted to thank you for bringing Tabitha. I was in awe of anyone with this patience to the work it takes to archive this. When you see boxes of information, it makes my head explode. Thank you, and thank you for the generosity and affordability that you made this possible for this city.
That's what a collaboration is.
And also the city of Rochester Hills for their...
Really, a collaboration works, and everybody gets something, you know, the equal amount out of it.
You've always done it with...
And so it's important for us that you know that we are diligently working on this thing.
Oh, absolutely. I do know.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the kind words, Carolyn.
Councilmember Hauser?
Mr. McKay, thank you for you and your team for doing such a great job. It really, truly is a gem in our community, and I was looking at your list of things that you offer. I know this is not inclusive of everything, but I can certainly remember several of these things with my family. You know, my son, you know, at the Halloween, the Stonewall, you know, the pumpkins and the splash in the winter and the summer, you know, with you guys with the fire trucks, and just this past winter with the train show, which is a big favorite of ours. So thank you very much. I do have one quick question. You'll see through many city buildings and maybe even downtown, some of these old pictures that are hanging up. There was a time that I believe they were for sale through you guys. Is that still...
Yeah, they're through the Rochester Avon Historical Society. They still are selling now. Because they're doing it, we're not. So if you go to the Rochester Avon Historical Society website, you'd be able to see them there.
And they'll put them up there. Okay, wonderful.
And we make them available. They are... You know, it doesn't happen a lot, and we do try to work out the copyright issue that we always have to deal with. But if somebody wants one of these pictures hanging on their walls, so do we. And so we want to help you have that picture. And we will help as new businesses moving to town and want some of these pictures on their wall, we're going to help them out.
Thanks, Elaine. I really appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you, Tabitha.
Pat, thank you, as always.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thanks to Tabitha, too.
Thank you, Tabitha. Keep up the good work, Tabitha. Thank you.
We're fortunate to see the next generation coming up behind us who's going to help carry the torch here for local history. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is a legislative update from our state representative, Mark Tisdale. Mark, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bixson. And I guess in my previous times here, I failed to express my appreciation to Mr. Banda as I just saw Pat do, so thank you, Mr. Banda, for having me here as well. I don't speak as quickly as Pat does. I don't know that anyone out there does, but I can tell you, I've been asked to speak a number of times at Veterans Day events, more memorial events, those kinds of things. Rather than sit down and try and write something out, I just call Pat, and he gives me... He's a great asset for the community, so thank you. It's really my pleasure today to announce... I found out on Friday that I am the municipal, Michigan Municipal League Legislator of the Year.
Whoa.
So... Good night.
Yeah.
Seems like a good time to ask.
Yeah.
No, Representative Amos O'Neill out of Saginaw, who's the chair of the Democratic Caucus, and I were both named. They always make it a bipartisan. It just recently, it was a two-bill package that I sponsored last term. It came back this term, passed with 106 votes out of 110 in the House of Representatives. But we're finally just about to solidify guaranteed, stable revenue sharing for cities year in and year out. On the statutory side, what has happened in the past is revenue sharing on the statutory side has been negotiated in appropriations.
That's right.
And too often, we've used... The state has used cities, villages, and townships revenue sharing to balance our budgets. But then you all still have to deliver the critical services. So what this new package does is Representative O'Neill's bill creates a trust fund, and then my bill creates the taxing mechanism or the taxing formula that feeds that trust fund. And it can only come out for that one purpose. The formula can be changed, and it's a percentage of tax, sales tax revenues every year. So as the state is enjoying elevated sales taxes or increased sales tax receipts, that's shared on a down year. It's, you know, everybody's going to take a little haircut on those as well. That formula can be changed, but it has to be done by changing the law, which would require a vote on the House floor and the Senate floor and signed by the governor. So if they want to turn around and tell everyone that we're not going to send you as much money anymore, that's their prerogative. There are 1,091 townships and 41 villages that will now be receiving some kind of revenue sharing that have not received anything in the past. So it was a... And I think the members recognize that a lot of those townships and villages are in their districts. At the end of the year, we passed two major pieces of legislation. One was a transparency bill that was required by a vote of the people. One of the propositions, I can't remember if it was one or two, it changed the term limits in the House and the Senate. But it also required that the legislature put in place financial disclosure requirements for the executive branch and the legislative branch. I had a bill last term that actually passed unanimously in the House requiring financial disclosure from the executive branch using what our congressmen and women file as the model. And there was a sister bill to that that passed unanimously for the legislature, but it just didn't go anywhere after the House. This was done at the end of the year, and I'm kind of sad to say that I voted against it. I was kind of in the something is better than nothing camp, but just the whole process. This was to... Would have been brought up in the Ethics and Oversight Committee. Ethics and Oversight, in the last 12 months, had zero hearings and voted on zero bills. The transparency bill was written without any bipartisan input. You know, ironically enough, a transparency bill was written in secret, and it came to the House floor, and we literally voted on it in the middle of the night, 2:30 a.m. of the night, 2:30 a.m. So, and it's, it's a little light, but it is something, and it's there. But I, I was just, I just couldn't go along with the process. The energy package also passed at the, at the end of the year. I voted no on that as well. The, the main bill in that package had 28 floor amendments. So, as the bill was coming up for a vote, it was amended 28 times. So, I can tell you that no one that voted for or against the bill knew what was actually in it. Couple of things that are disturbing. Back in May of 2023, we passed a bill out of the House that I, that I was, I was against it, that substituted a payment in lieu of tax fee instead of the traditional millage for valuation as applied to renewable installations, primarily in the townships, just because of the size of space they need. The problem with that is it's, it's, it's a $7,000 payment in lieu of tax fee per megawatt of installed capacity. Problem is, they never told us what the value of that mater, of the equipment is that, that constitutes a megawatt of installed capacity. So, you didn't know if the $7,000 was an adequate number or not. And that, that passed along party lines. And then in the, in the energy package, that package also removes citing or zoning authority over placement of, of wind and solar arrays, again, primarily in our townships, because that's, that's where the space is. But that, it removes that authority from local governments and is now something that will be handled at the state level. So, so really, the local governments have lost their taxing authority, and they've lost their zoning authority on that. DTE has committed to 10 million solar panels installed. I'm not sure what that equates to in the way of, of energy. Consumers' Power has committed to 8,000 megawatts of installed. What I remind people all the time, and this is of solar, and this is, this is to be done by 2040. Michigan ranks 41st in the nation in sunlight hours. The, the effective capacity, the capacity factor for solar in the state of Michigan is 18%. And so, what you'll see is they'll always tell you how much capacity they've installed, but you have to look at that and say, yeah, 18% is what we're going to get on the average. And so, it's very difficult. And the, the Michigan Healthy Environment Plan, it envisions 2 million, the goal is 2 million EVs registered in the state of Michigan by the year 2030. The last number I saw is we're at 35,000. So, there's 1.965 million EVs to be sold in the next year. And remember, under the energy package, the incremental energy that's being added is solar. So, if we do get to 2 million, and 2 million EVs are driving home at night after work and plugging in to be charged in, all those solar panels will be tucked away in bed for the night. So, I'm not sure I understand the bigger picture. I'm hoping that, that someone does. Last but not least, one of the bills that I did vote for that, that is seen as controversial by, by many Second Amendment advocates, I voted for the creation of a misdemeanor domestic violence charge that applies a loss of gun ownership and possession rights for, for up to eight years after all sentencing and probation requirements have been met. In the state of Michigan, and that's for misdemeanor conviction, in the state of Michigan, felony conviction, of course, has always carried a, a penalty or an infringement upon, upon possession and, and ownership of firearms. In Oakland County, 2% of criminal cases go to trial. That means that 98% are plea bargained. So, if you're charged with felony domestic violence, there's a 98% probability that that will be plea bargained down to something else. If convicted, you would lose your gun rights. So, we're, if you don't, if you, if you look at how the penalty is actually applied, 98% of the time, those convicted of misdemeanor domestic violence will have agreed to the penalty, will have agreed to the charge, and will understand the consequences. 34% of all women, female homicides in the state of Michigan, in the United States, are at the hands of an intimate partner. So, this is not a onesie-twosie kind of thing. When a domestic violence victim, and they can be men or women, predominantly women, but when a domestic violence victim gets law enforcement involved, their, their risk of injury or death increases fivefold. So, this is, this is a significant, this is a significant issue. And if you look at the, up to eight years for the misdemeanor, three to five years on the, on the felony, you have to remember, it's after the entire sentencing, probation fines, after everything is met, then the clock starts ticking on that possession and ownership prohibition. So, three to five years for felony, obviously, their, their, their sentencing and probation requirements are going to be longer. So, it's about an equal amount of time. But the risks are, the risks are there. And that's all I have on my little list. Questions?
Questions for State Rep?
Oh, I just have one.
Yes.
Councilmember Trent?
Uh, yes.
Member 10. Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you for your update. And also, thank you for voting for, yes, on House Bill 4857 to de-list milkweed.
Oh.
Oh, and save the monarch butterfly. 88 to 21. I don't know who those 21 are. Maybe I need to call them, but I don't know.
Some people just don't like anything.
Some people just don't. 21 people in the House of Representatives do not like monarch butterflies.
Yeah, it was important legislation that, that you helped bring forward.
Yeah, thanks. It does.
Maybe actually were the sole driving force. But as, as many people might or might not know, but the milkweed feeds the monarch butterflies on their trip back and forth from Mexico or South America.
Where they're young. Yes.
Wherever they go.
Yeah. Wherever they go. You weren't at the Agricultural Committee, but it was representative. Representative Stekloff was the, was the driving force. And neonicotinoids to ban them from public lands will be coming up next. I'll call you.
That I, that I am pretty certain of.
To save the rest of the pollinators. We just want to, yeah, thank you. So.
Okay. Mark, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from Julianne from the Rochester Public Library. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Council, for having me here tonight. And I'll follow suit and be with you later.
Don't eat, trust me.
This is our annual report. We like to get in front of you every January and just give you an update of.
And give you an update of what's happening at the library. Typically, I'm here with Alice Mu, who is the appointee, the liaison from the city of Rochester, who is a diligent member of, of the larger, you know, she's not a full-fledged member of the board, but she serves as liaison. She comes to every single board meeting. She's been appointed to committees. And I just wanted to let you know that she wishes she could be here tonight. She had a work conflict, but she did ask me to present on behalf of all the good work that the library's been up to. And I always like to begin with just the populations we serve, because I do think that this is a remarkable piece that we lay claim to. These are all of the different categories that we, we have identified of, of people that we serve. The other fact that I really love to point out, though, is that we are one of the few institutions and organizations that serves every single generation of users. So, from Gen Alpha, our babies, they have storytimes at the library, all the way up to Silent Generation, we have something for everyone at the library. So, you'll see those common categories there, but they also slot themselves into all different age groups. So, there's not that many organizations that can, that can lay claim to that, that accolade. Our purpose, it's always helpful for me to remind you, these are our main goals that drive our strategic planning. So, inspire lifelong learners, nurture developing minds, advocate critical thinking, foster community collaboration, provide a welcoming space for enjoyment and discovery. This year, as some people have already mentioned, we are excited to announce our centennial celebration. So, we are celebrating 100 years. We were formed in 1924 by that ladies' organization. You can see, we adopted a logo for this year, so everything is going to have that 100 branding. And one of the things we did this last weekend was actually kick off our centennial year with a wonderful community-wide event called the Winter Wonder Library. We welcomed around 800 people to the library on Friday night as part of Frost Fest. So, we wanted to tie into some of the festivities that were happening in town. And I have a few pictures here. So, you can see a, a young patron who's coloring at one of our youth tables. We did luminaries for the outside, and then they, they brought them out to the back gardens with little tea lights in them. We had games for families. All different ages participated in the games. We had upgrading your library card. So, you see, I think, a husband and wife duo here, who actually went through and upgraded their library cards. We have commemorative library cards for the year. And we had celebrity readers. So, thank you very much to Rep. Tisdale, who was there. He was one of our celebrity readers. And of course, Mayor Bixson as well was one of our celebrity readers. We really appreciate that you helped make the night very special for everyone in attendance. So, by the numbers, you have this in your packet. This is really a look back at where we were in 2023. So, before we talk too much about '24, I want to point out the accomplishments of 2023. So, oops, sorry. So, lots of things are up. This is a great thing to celebrate. Our visitors are up. If you notice on this spreadsheet here, you see that we had over 420,000 visitors. When you do the math, that equates more than 1,000 people a day are coming to the public library, which is a tremendous success. And clearly, you know, an indicator of the fact that people want to have a physical space. They're coming to study. They're coming for storytimes. They're coming for just that third place, where they're tired of being at home, and they need to have that other outlet. Our circulation is up. Our e-materials are up by 20%, and our room bookings are up by 25%. So, let's talk about some things we accomplished in 2023. Facility upgrades. We swapped our large shelving for lower-height shelvings. We added a seating nook outside of our store. We replaced our limestone on the west entrance. Our admin corridor got a refresh with a new office. We replanted our west entrance with new foliage. We added a 10th study room to try to keep up with that demand for these spaces. And what's called our used book nook, this is where our friends sell gently-used books from the community at large. They got permanent shelves, and that runs on an honor system. You'd be surprised how much that actually pulls in as a stream of revenue. We're slated to, I think the final numbers came in at 20,000 on just the honor system alone, of people purchasing used books. And all of that, that contribution comes back to the library. We got a new mini mokewobill rolling in the hills this year, so we're really excited about that. And community events and outreach. So, we launched our memory cafe sessions. This is part of the dementia-friendly Rochester Initiative that we were active with. We provided respite, recharging, and Wi-Fi access during those power outages, which happened both last winter. Those were particularly hard. I know myself, I was in the downtown. I live in the downtown, and we were without power for about four days. So, we loved having the library as a, as a space to go to. We also helped out when there were some summer power outages as well. We offered a summer art project with the community. We added a citizenship corner. We provide instant library cards, so you can register for a library card without even coming into the library and gain instant access to our digital collections. And we served as an early voting site. I know this wasn't the year where things matched up enough for us to be that regional site for the city of Rochester. But if we were to continue as an early voting site, this might be a collaboration that we continue, that we continue to pursue for the city of Rochester as well. Just some organizational updates. We renewed a contract with Oakland County, so we actually hold a contract with the county itself. We offer library services to the blind and print disabled. We went through a successful library board election. We retained one incumbent, and we added a new library board member in Harper West this year. We've been doing a lot of centennial planning. We have something planned for every single month in 2024. And we launched a new website and online catalog. Here you'll see, this is a picture of us actually with some of our county commissioners, celebrating the success of the Oakland Talking Book Service, which is that services for the blind and, and print disabled. And that brings me to the end of my presentation and any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Council?
I don't have a question. I just, thank you very much for everything you do. And I'm always in awe of just the additional services that you keep offering and, and, you know, and trying to keep, well, it's interesting where you say you have over 1,000 visitors a day, because I remember when I was speaking with your team before, you were like, how do we keep a, a library relevant? So, I, it looks like you have.
And I'll, I'll add to that. Today, I walked around the library, because I knew it was coming in, in front of you. And as most of you know, it was a half-day for RCS students in the upper, in the secondary schools. And at 3:30, we have 75 tabletops where, where people are allowed to study up on our second floor. And I did a quick count. I think there were only six tables that were empty, and they were almost all predominantly students in that, that teenage age group, which I think is marvelous. As the parent of teenagers, the idea of coming to the library and adulting for the first time is a wonderful thing that I, I look forward to, to being that space for plenty of families and teenagers alike.
Wow.
Just Julianne, nice to see you. How are you?
Good.
I just want to tell you, that library is such a gem and a cornerstone for this community, and I appreciate everything that you and your team do.
Thank you.
It's such a beautiful building. It's always so nice and clean when you go inside there. So, again, I know it's a lot of work that you guys do, and it's certainly noticed. One quick question I have. I noticed the e-materials circulation. Can you explain that to me for just, is that like a Kindle you can download information, your Kindle? Could you explain that to me and maybe some other people in the public here?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. So, when I refer to e-materials, it refers to three main categories of, of type of material. It's ebooks, it's e-audio. So, if you prefer to stream your audiobooks, and you don't have a CD player in your car, you don't want to have that physical media anymore, it's streaming in, in e-audiobook. And it's use of premium databases. So, it's doing homework help for some of our students, or it's getting to things like, we have full-fledged access to The New York Times and The Wall Street Journal, which are typically, you know, very premium content that, you know, most consumers have to pay for if, if you're going to have that level of access. What not everyone knows is that you can actually use your library card to get to both of those, get behind the paywall, because your taxes have already paid for it with the subscription that we have. So, what we're counting is how many articles have you gone to, how many ebooks have you checked out, how many e-audiobooks have you checked out when we get to those numbers.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by the interim Rochester Community School Superintendent John Silvery on the proposed millage election and anything else that we would like to talk about. And I will just say, my former superintendent in Waterford.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. So, I'll, I'll start by saying it's an honor and a privilege to, to serve as the interim superintendent of Rochester Community Schools. I'm a community member. I lived in Rochester for about the last 16 years. So, when asked to step up and serve in this role, I was, felt somewhat compelled to do so to serve my, my community and my, my home school district. I will tell you, too, that having been a superintendent previously and long-term in two different school districts, serving as an interim in another, and taking on various roles and working with districts in a variety of capacities throughout southeast Michigan over the last, gosh, nine years since I retired from Waterford. I have a strong basis of comparison. I've, I've seen and worked with a lot of school districts. This is an outstanding school district. You know, the normato is pride and excellence. And as I've become fond of saying, it's not pride and perfection. So, we don't claim to be perfect. We don't claim that there's nothing to improve upon. Of course, there is. Some evidence of that is we're engaged in a strategic planning process to identify those things that if we really zero in on those areas, we believe that will most significantly move the needle forward and improve our district as a whole. So, we recognize that. But at the same time, we should be proud, because this really is an excellent school district. So, I'm very pleased to be here for this school year. I'll be here through June 30th, as the district is now undergoing a search for the long-term superintendent, who will start on July 1. So, I'm here tonight to talk about the non-homestead millage proposal. I didn't bring a proposal or a presentation.
We never know.
You're going to have to stare at me and listen to me chat. Sorry about that. So, you're going to find that on the ballot on February 27, along with the presidential primaries. A pretty short ballot, so this will stand out. We're funded primarily, all public schools are, almost all of our funding comes on a per pupil basis from the state of Michigan. So, we get an amount, I'm going to give you the right amount. It's $9,608 per student. That's based on the number of students we have. But to levy that full, to, to receive that full amount, we have to levy 18 mills on non-homestead properties in the community. It's been that way since Proposal A passed way back in 1994, so this is nothing new. We've had to periodically come back to our community and ask for this to be renewed and/or increased, and I'll talk about that momentarily. So, this really has been the case for decades. A really significant factor for everybody to understand, when I talk about non-homestead properties, for those of us that own a home in Rochester, and includes me, I own one home in Rochester. I don't have any other properties. This has no application to me. This has no bearing on me whatsoever. I don't pay any taxes towards this. So, for anybody who that's the case for, if you own a home in Rochester or anywhere within the Rochester schools, you're not impacted by this in any way, shape, or form. If you own a second home, a rental home business, this does apply to you. And so, for many, many years, it's been levied at 18 mills across the board, and this won't change that. The ballot language itself can be a little bit confusing, as sometimes happens with ballot language. And we tried like the devil to make it a little bit more understandable, and this was the best we could do. So, I want to make clear, it's asking for a renewal of the current 18.5 mills that have been authorized by the community. There's a fraction there, too, but to round it a bit. And then an increase of .5 mills. So, you might ask, why an increase? There is something called headly erosion. And over time, it's an adjustment based on inflation. So, what we've seen, for example, when this last passed 10 years ago, originally, the voters authorized right about 20 mills, but at no time are we able to, even if we wanted to, levy more than 18. The additional mills that are authorized simply account for headly erosion. So, this initiative will be for five years. So, it's a renewal of 18.5 mills for five years, an increase of .5 for those five years, too. But it just is kind of insurance against what is almost certainly going to be some additional headly erosion over time. So, even though this would bump up the number of mills that have been authorized by the community to right around 19, at no time would we authorize more than 18. This just protects us so that over the next five years, if that erosion takes place and that 19 starts to drop, we should be in good shape so that at no time would it drop below 18. If it were to drop below 18, we could no longer receive our full foundation allowance, which would be obviously problematic for the district. If this were not to pass, the impact on the district would be really, really significant. Let me give you the exact numbers. So, that $9,608 per student would drop to $8,060 per student. That's quite a precipitous drop, which would be a ballpark of about $24.5 million in lost funding to the district. So, it's really, really critical that for us to receive that full foundation allowance and full funding, to continue to offer the programs and services and staffing and everything. full funding, to continue to offer the programs and services and staffing and everything we do now. Absolutely critical for us that the community continues to support us in this manner. So the biggest takeaway from this again, in spite of the potentially a little bit confusing ballot language, for businesses, second homes, et cetera, you're going to see that 18 mills being levied just as it has for the last 10 years, the last 20 years, the last 30 years. No change there. For anybody who owns a home in the city of Rochester, no impact whatsoever. So I'm happy at this point. Hopefully that does explain it just a bit to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Councilmember Jones.
I am concerned that there will be some confusion. And I know you're trying really hard to make it very easy to understand, but what worries me also was about language being confusing. So what sort of ad campaign have you put together? How are you, I know I got this in my mailbox.
Yes.
How, what else? Because I really think you're going to have to hit this really hard and it's in February. So we're kind of close.
There's a citizens committee that's been put together too. We have to be careful. As a school district, we can't advocate. Now, the superintendent is an exception to that. The superintendent can advocate. So I can, I can say that. But as a district, we can put out information. So the information that you received was from the school district. It's informational only. It's not advocating to vote in any particular way. It's just asking people to vote and saying, here's what you're voting on. That additional committee that's in place will be able to do some advocacy too. So they've got some things in the works. You're going to be seeing some additional info coming not only from the district, informational in nature, but then some other pieces coming that are more about advocacy as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager.
Welcome. Not, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but Saturday, City Council, we talked about a slide that we put up in our goals and objectives that said, showed a picture of the admin building with a caption that basically said, once in a lifetime of opportunity. And I was asked to reach out to superintendent, which I did on Sunday. And Christina, thank you for her. And immediately, he called me first thing in the morning and we chatted. And we talked about what we talked about Saturday, which is how could there be an opportunity for the city and the school board work together on acquiring the building with taking it to our voters to figure out a way to make that happen. And it was kind of like test the wires. And I knew I was superintendent, couldn't say anything without talking to your board. But we had a good conversation, a positive conversation. He understood what we were talking about. He was excited as I was, I think. But again, you all and his board will be the ones that make that decision. But we did open the door. We wanted to make sure that we know there's a steering committee that we're working with and things like that. So I appreciate you calling me back and having the discussion that we had. And hopefully we can get together formally soon so that we can show you what we have in mind and see if we can get in line with some of these folks.
Our board had previously expressed interest, which I'd conveyed to some of you too, in potentially working with the city, with the city council, to see how we might partner up and find some use for that building. We know, it's been made clear that there's a lot of folks in the community who do not want to see that building taken down, right?
Right.
We understand that. So we're looking at the best case scenario being that we're able to find a use for that building, even if it's not the school district's use. That would permit us to sell the property, but see that building refurbished. Whatever happens on the inside is going to be up to the new owner that happen to be the city, of course. But the interest is in the facade being kind of perked up and kept in place. So if the outcome of any further discussions is that that building can prove to be useful to the city, we can maintain that facade and make members in the community very happy on a lot of fronts. And that potentially could make us very happy as a school district too.
Yeah.
It's certainly something that we have great interest in discussing further. So I'll take ownership of expediting some conversations that can take place soon. And we can see if we can find kind of a place where we have agreement on how to proceed from here. But I am excited about the prospect of entering into that dialogue soon.
As we are. Thank you, Mayor Proten Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you for clarifying the ballot language. We know firsthand how confusing ballot language can be. And so it's important to clarify it and do everything you can to educate the residents. So hopefully they're all listening. And also thank you for speaking to the administration building. I think council is, I'll say cautiously interested and exciting about partnerships. We do well with partnerships. That's how we operate as a community. So we're excited about that. And I think ultimately it's very important that this go to the vote of the people. And I think that is also something that council is really emphasizing. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks, John.
Thank you. And again, we had a meeting and we talked about it. And I want to say that I think the council was unanimously interested in exploring it and collaborating and things like that. So we look forward to working with you.
Same here. Very much so.
Thank you for coming, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a consideration of the minutes of
Do you want to ask?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there any other public comment? Come on up, please. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Cody Smith. I live at 528 Ludlow Avenue.
Welcome, Cody.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here because I received a message on Saturday from somebody that was in attendance at the budget planning meeting that happened, I guess, Saturday morning. And so I just wanted to come and I guess dispute some update that was given. So I was, I was told that Nick, you had provided an update on the SolarOnyx project. I'm not here to dispute the project itself. I'll wait till the planning commission to talk about that. But what was told to me is that Nick, that you provided an update that I had met with the contractor.
Eric. It was Eric.
Okay. Well, they said they heard Eric and myself have both met with the contractor recently, which is not the case. I have not met with you or the contractor since, I think, February, the planning commission of last year. And there was, I do know that there was a meeting with some of the Ludlow residents back in August. Nothing recently. No one's seen any plans from the contractor. There was no approvals given or anything like that. So I just wanted to make, you know, clear for one, my name, I was not at this meeting. It happened in August, not recently. And there was no approvals or anything given at that time.
Yeah. And just for the record, if you may, I didn't say there was any approvals, but the contractor met with a group of people from Ludlow. I don't know if it was you or not, but.
It was three people in attendance. I know who was there.
And it was August and they were just sketching it out to try to come up with an agreement. So absolutely understand.
Yeah. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I think on this project, we certainly want citizen impact input and input from your group and people on the street. But of course, you guys would give your opinion. The approval would come from the planning commission and ultimately the city council. So I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, William.
Thanks, Cody.
Anything further from the audience? Okay. Now on to approval of the consideration of the regular minutes of January 8, 2024.
So moved?
Motion by Mayor Proten Salvia. Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is the appointment of election workers for the February 27th, which we just heard about. 2024 election for early voting, Election Day absentee voter counting board for processing, early voting tabulation, Election Day, and receiving board. Things have gotten a little more complicated over the years. Next is a consideration to approve the second annual tour de Cedar Brook cycling to end Alzheimer's. I might be part of that. And next is a consideration to approve the Italian happening event. Is there a motion?
I would motion to approve A, B, and C.
Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Hauser.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next reports and regular business is the annual tree report. Mayor Proten Salvia.
City manager.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I won't go through this all, but in your packet, I gave you a year-end review of, like I do every January, the status of what we did. So again, we had an active tree committee. We met, I think, four times during the year. We set goals. We had our fall, our spring planting. We had a fall planting. This year, we really ramped up Arbor Day. And we had a really fun day at the Holy Family School and Church where we planted a tree. But we had the whole, I think it was third grade class was out there. And we got a chance to talk about what it meant. And it was really a special day. And we're going to keep doing that, just ramping it up more and more like we used to do. We offered lunch to the kids and they didn't even want that. They just wanted to talk about trees and everybody got to talk. So, and we planted a tree, brought the fire department, DBW, and council folks for that. It was a really great day and we will continue to do that. And we are certified again for Tree City USA. Again, not a, everybody kind of takes it for granted, but you have to, I think it's a 10-page document I go through every year. And if you don't meet certain standards, you don't get it. They don't just give it to you. So you have to spend so much per capita, have so many volunteer hours, you have to plant so many trees and you're right away have a maintenance plan, et cetera. So we work hard, Parks and Rec, I'm sorry, the forestry division of Parks works on that with me year-round in order for us to do that. We had the Rochester 100 again. We were trying every year to plant 100 trees on city property. And it's kind of neat to say, we didn't have enough room to plant 100 trees this year, believe it or not, because we can't plant more in the municipal park. We respect the open space, so we're pretty much done there. We work with the Mount Avon Cemetery. We always can plant a few there, but there's not a lot of room there, obviously, also. So we do a couple of things. We still have our tree bait program. So that let the private sector get $250 off of a $500 tree to plant on their property. But we're still involved in that. And four people this year took advantage of that. And whenever they find out that they can get some money back to plant a tree, it's a, it's a nice story. This year, last year we got to the 100 because we had the Sugar Maple Grove. And again, we had a place that we could plant 26 additional trees. So we tried to identify other spots around town. We went up and down Letica, if you remember. This year, we filled in on Romeo, on Mahaffey, Walnut. Any tree that came down in a storm was replanted. Carl's got the, everybody that needed a tree except for one. I just heard from them today, actually. Last fall, they were hoping to get a tree and the stump hadn't been done yet. But we got, we're caught up now. So if anybody had a tree removed due to the storm, it died, a city tree, we've replanted on that property. So we'll build that list back up. Obviously, storms in the winter here have created some more opportunities to plant more trees next year. So we have about $30,000 that's unallocated in the tree fund. There's another $31,000 in there that was put in by a homeowner that has a year after they get their certificate of occupancy, which should be this fall coming up, to see if they could plant $31,000 of the trees on their own property, which is going to be impossible. And then they know that money would roll over and stay into the tree fund. The goal of the tree fund, I say this all the time, is to have $0 in there. We want to plant everything that we can. We opened it up, our tree bait program to homeowners associations on the east side. So we worked together with them. They haven't taken us up on it money-wise yet, but we planted trees in the right way where they might have been behind the sidewalk and on their private property. We found a way to put them in the, in the public, private, public land so that we could pay for their trees. So have a great relationship with them. So again, look forward to another robust year next year. We only had, I think, three violators this year. So which means our social media, our website, all that good stuff is getting people to know that's important to us. Get a permit, it's $50. If it's a damaged tree or diseased, I go out and look at it and there is no permit fee. So our job is to protect our canopy. Not this fall, the next fall, we'll do another tree canopy scan to see where we're at. And the goal was to remember, keep it the same or increase it. So I think we're doing a great job. So all the details are in the report. Anybody has any questions, we'll put this on the website now, once council blesses it. And then we'll share this information with the community. That's it.
Mayor Proten Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. And I know we have a newly formed committee, if you will, with Councilmember Trent and Councilmember Jones. So we're going to be looking to schedule that meeting maybe early February. I know our trees got hit hard with that storm. So I really think we're going to have to take a good look at our canopy here. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I look forward to it.
Do we need a motion?
No. It's just a head nod. We're good with that. Okay.
Next is the quarterly financial report, end of December 31, 2023. Mr. City Treasurer, Maggio, welcome.
Good day and evening, council. Happy Monday.
That's not quite as enthusiastic as Mr. McKay and
We love, you know, it's just how it goes sometimes. We had a wonderful weekend, had a lot of, as I pull this up, we did a lot of pancakes, over 220 orders Sunday for leader dog for the blinds.
Wow.
Yeah. That was, that was something. But the thing that's different from that one versus the other ones is you have to have all of it done at once. So it's like the race ends and all 200 people want it right now. So it was good, though. We had a good time. It was a good weekend. They were happy. That's the important part. All right. It's page 40. Close. Very close. There we go. All right. So tonight, we have presentation. So there are no amendments being requested tonight. And there's just a few items I'm going to highlight. Thank you for the inquiries and questions about, about the reports. I'm going to hit a few of those items as we run, as we run through this here. Zoom that a little more. All right, cool. On our funds here, just overall view, budget-wise, everything's, there's, there's nothing jumping out that has any sort of big issue or waiver from what we're planning on. General fund, whether it's, it's revenues coming in, it's just because tax payments are received right away at the end of August. So we receive those funds up ahead of time and then spend it down during the year. And then the same thing with like water, water and sewer fund, for instance, where the majority of the payments in that are received after the irrigation season, which is in the first two quarters for the city's fiscal year. Interest revenue remains high. We're still at around 5.5%. We're seeing it start to tip off, but it's really interesting how everybody has an opinion on where the rates are going and when.
Of course.
So I was at a conference Thursday and Friday, and even the professional advisors, no one will give any sort of inkling on what anybody thinks about anything. So it's really just roll the dice and we'll see what happens. It's roughly 200, well, just in general fund, about 250,000, 300,000 a year. And then across all the other funds as well. So we, the current trend is it's at least going to hold steady for a while. But even on CDs, we're starting to see the dip as you get out over a year. But we'll continue monitoring that and, and seeing where that goes. So there's still some basic discussion that as much as inflation is trying to be taken under control and measures are working, even due to things like, like ARPA funds, for instance, there's a lot of requirements of that money having to be spent over the next couple of years. So there are some thoughts that, well, we're taming it and then we're also requiring more money to be put into the economy as those funds are expensed. So we're not sure. And that's where some of the divisive, different viewpoints are going on it, is we're not sure what that means or what that will look like. So we'll, we'll keep monitoring that. And at the end of it, usually, we'll aim for that soft landing as we go forward there. One item brought to my attention here is on the, and I may have to zoom this in a little more, on the interest revenue. So what happens when you see no income on the two lines? So we budget the income on just this line right here, 665. But the, there's a whole bunch of subsidiary lines for the different avenues, whether it's an investment account, the Sage that. And at the end of it, usually, we'll aim for that soft landing as we go forward there. One item brought to my attention here is on the, and I may have to zoom this in a little more, on the interest revenue. So what happens when you see no income on the two lines? So we budget the income on just this line right here, 665. But the, there's a whole bunch of subsidiary lines for the different avenues, whether it's an investment account, the Sage advisory account. Those are all 665, 001, 002, 003. So we have kind of a rolled up, like 665 is all of the income for, for investments, but it doesn't roll up because they're all lines underneath it. So I'm going to play around with that a little bit, and I think I can make that make more sense versus just the, kind of the auto-populating feed for, for those lines. So I'm going to get going and figuring out some pieces on that one.
So Treasurer Maggio, can you speak to what that number is through, through December 31st?
We're posted through November, right about 138,000, somewhere right around there. Yeah. We have a few other postings that we're putting in today, and that's, so we're getting caught back up through, through the end of December.
So on track.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we should be above that by the time we get to the end of the year, the fiscal year. Other question came up on the, the healthcare fund. So we have the self, we had the self-insurance fund, 677, that we had made, that we were putting money away, stocking up fund balance. So in the high years, we'd have money to pay the claims. In the lower years, then, then we could save up for the higher-year fund. So the idea now is still to maintain, essentially, we're going to rename it, I guess, as just the insurance fund. But that is where the city charges against all the different departments. That money goes into the insurance fund. That 677 fund is going to be making the payments to the, to Blue Cross and also Medicare Advantage. And then when there's withdrawals out of the OPEB trust, that is going to go into the 677 account, just so that we can account for that more readily, and we can make sure that we're keeping track, especially for the trust, and we're not just putting the money into, this would be page 49 in the packet, into the city's general fund. It's going to stay separate for that. Those were some of the questions I've received. There was a thought, and I'm, I'm open to counsel about, you know, the city's kind of a large machine. There's a billion different pieces and parts to it. But if there's ever any ideas of things that, you know, might be of interest to counsel, like, hey, you know, next time, can you talk about, you know, what is, you know, pick a fund in here, you know, we'll hit the roads fund. Let's hit roads. Talk about maybe Act 51 a little bit. Talk about water and sewer maybe one time. If there's any sort of interest that counsel has, just let me know ahead of time. I'm happy to put some kind of context around it. We're always trying to make the quarterly reports more usable and, and interesting and beneficial to, to counsel and the community that's watching. So even community, if anybody has a topic that you want to know about, send an email in. You can send it to info, I N F O, at RochesterMI.org. I'll get that. And then, you know, we can maybe take a little tidbit piece and, or start a TV show or a TikTok. Finance TikTok, Treasury TikTok. There we go. We'll get a lot of viewers. But with that, those are questions I'd received ahead of time and just kind of talking through it. We did hit more of it, obviously, with the fund balances and that on Saturday for the goals and objectives. But any other questions, I'm happy to take those.
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Howser.
Anthony, how you doing? Can you go up back to the general fund quarterly revenue slide for just a moment? I've got a couple of questions here, and they may not make sense now, but they will be when we get to a couple of discussion topics here. So for instance, on the, is it line 657, the other ordinance violations, the budget is, city's going to receive revenue in the amount of $87,000 approximately, right? Can you tell me a little bit, what are some of those violations? Well, give me an example of what those would be.
Everything in there, that, that is actually Attorney Krot's revenue line.
Okay.
That is the line that we book all the monies we receive back from the courts. So all of the district court fees, reports and fines that go through the court system, that Attorney Krot helps us navigate for violators, and that, that's what goes into that line. That's, that's all it is.
Does that include, and maybe Chief Police would answer this one too, like speeding tickets or impeding traffic tickets? Is that, City Attorney, does that consider revenue for you? When I say you, but I'm talking to that line item. And I mean that in a nice, I'm just trying to figure out.
The city, you mean. The bank said, Anthony said that that's when, when the city gets checks from the court.
Right.
That would include, they don't differentiate, unfortunately, where those buckets come from. They just send en masse checks because, you know, that would include speeding tickets, then it would include, you know, fines and costs from a drunk driver or a.
Light violation.
Whatever violation, whatever in the motor vehicle code that we end up prosecuting locally. And I believe that it would also, there's a cost recovery for drunk driving cases that, that this court recognizes, and it's usually $275 per drunk driving is probably the average. That when the court collects it, that goes directly to the city. They don't divvy it up like they would normally do. That's payable right to the city. So that, that, I, I think if that's just the, the bucket that the court money comes from, then that would include all of those things.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
It's very small compared to, like, if there's a $100 ticket, you know, what the city gets out of is very small.
Understood. And then, Anthony, one more question, and I know this was talked about, I think it was the income on investments, you have the $250,000.
Yes.
But it's 665, you said was broken down into different bunch of categories. Are you able to tell us, and if you can, it's perfectly fine, but the revenue that the city had made on interest this year, was that the 138 number that you would say?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to receive the quarterly budget update as presented.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Vixen.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, next we have Riverfront Place Brownfield reimbursement agreement. We have a representative from Randazzo, also.
And Jessica's here, their environmental consultant. She's on Zoom.
So Nick, why don't you?
Yes.
Get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of months ago, the city council listened to the group, the Randazzo groups ask for a brownfield to help them with the unanticipated costs to remediate the bad dirt at the corner of Walnut and First. So if you remember, like, three years ago, Planning Commission City Council approved apartment complex with 17 condos, I believe, down by the river. At that time, we were not looking at a brownfield. The developer was going to eat that cost. As time went on, costs went up. The land appeared to be dirtier. And Jessica, you can talk about that after if you'd like, they're a consultant. And they came back and asked to be considered to the Brownfield Authority. So we did our due diligence. We worked together. We talked about, if you remember, the difference between a green field and a brownfield, we knew that if they didn't ask for anything, they still had to remove the dirt. But the difference of per yard, bad dirt versus good dirt, that's what we settled on. So that had to be memorialized into an agreement. How we would pay that back, we did the same thing for the re-walled, successful plan. We just finished the one, I believe, for the elevator. It's a standard procedure. Attorney Krot goes through this with them and their team, and we're ready to submit this tonight for your approval. It's been vetted again by our attorneys. The Randazzo group has also accepted this. Andy's here to, to talk. Mr. Millie is here to talk about anything we might have. And again, Jessica DeBoan is their consultant that helped work with our consultants on the environmental side of this.
Okay. Counsel, how do you want to?
Sure.
Councilmember Howser, did you want to add something?
Sure. So as you may know, I'm also chairperson of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have gone through this numerous occasions, in fact. On May 15th, 2023 is when they brought it back to Brownfield. And then on June 26th is when this body, city council, approved it. And so in the packet was the Brownfield reimbursement agreement. I have gone through this. It is consistent with my understanding as a representative of the Brownfield, and it's also consistent with what was stated at that meeting in June. So I would make a motion to approve the Brownfield reimbursement agreement that is provided for in the packet. If there's any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. I know Marcy is here, and I'm sure Mr. Bandit would as well.
So first, we have a motion by Councilmember Howser. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion. Councilmember Trent.
Have Nancy go.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Okay, I'd just like to, you know, since we're voting on this, just wanted to clarify the, the dollar amount. So it looks like on page five of the agreement, it says anything in excess of the developer's application fee. No, that's just $1,500. So what is the total dollar amount of this Brownfield?
So if we look at page two of the agreement, the developer, Randazzo, estimates that the eligible cost, which is the fine term, which eligible cost means the amount that he would have to do to mitigate the environmental hazards is approximately $1.9 million. So that's the eligible cost, including contingencies as well. And then if you go to the next page, I'm sorry, page four, talks about the reimbursements. Okay, so the reimbursements will not exceed $1,957,268. And then it's broken down in letters C and D as to how that would be repaid. So the city's maximum liability would not exceed $987,483. And the balance is determinative whether or not the state approves the school taxes component of the Brownfield. So at most, the city is, is, would recapture the $987,000. If the state approves it, then Randazzo, the developer, would get that as well, but we are only obligated for the $987,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Recaptured and paid over seven years.
Exactly. Just in case anybody's watching.
Yes.
It's not that we're writing them a check. They pay, once they build the building out, there's us taxes, the taxes are captured, and then we pay them back with their own taxes. But it's not new dollars out of the taxpayers' pockets.
That's very important. I want to stress that the city is not paying for this. All we're doing is, is, once the job is complete, once the assessment is recalculated by the taxing authority, that delta goes back to the developer. We don't receive that money for another seven years. So the city's not paying anything out of pocket. We're just not collecting the property tax increase for that period of time until that $987,000 is paid down.
And I think why that's important is it's a, it's an investment in each other. After seven years, all the taxes that would be city allocated come to us forever. So it's a, it's an inducement, if you will. It's a big ask. But a lot of projects, like $1.9 million, is not a small number to clean up bad dirt. And we know that Clint River's right there. We know the water table's right there. So it's the right thing to do, but we still are fiscally responsible that it's their money paying themselves back over seven years.
Right. And theoretically, we're getting a dirty cycling.
A hundred percent.
Right. Exactly.
No, I want, you go first.
I just also, since the developers here would love an update on the project, how is it going? How is it going with the soil? How's it going with construction?
I asked him that already before the meeting, but I think probably everybody wants to hear it.
Thank you. Andy Millie, I'm a development consultant here on behalf of Trowbridge Companies, which is Mr. Randazzo's company. During the past six months since this was approved, we've been working on the, we signed a $400,000 engineering contract, engineering and architectural design contract. We've been working on the engineering and the design drawings, as well as obtaining costs for the cleanup. So no actual construction has started on the site, but a lot of costs have been spent on the soft work, on the soft costs and engineering costs that go into this project.
So any update on the timeline?
Timing is still intended to be late spring, early summer. Construction start, starting first with the cleanup.
My comment would be, so my understanding was that your company didn't understand how bad the contamination was, or it cost more to clean this up than you had thought?
Actually, both. When we did the initial environmental, we had, you do so many soil borings and do so much testing on it. During the course of time, over the last couple of years, we did some additional testing. Testing proved out that there was more contamination than originally thought. And the cost of construction has gone up across the board, but the cost of environmental cleanup has almost doubled in the last couple of years because of the trucking costs and because of the, what's called tipping costs to take it to a landfill. So what was thought to be about a, you know, four, $500,000 original problem that Mr. Randazzo was prepared to just absorb, turned into a million-dollar problem, and then turned into, with a cost increase, turned into almost a million-nine problem when you include the contingencies.
So this is like the worst-case scenario. I mean, the whole place is contaminated. I mean, this is a long, this is a long list. I'm not familiar with all these names of contaminants, but I'm looking at this list thinking, if it's worse, could, I mean, is 1.9 million the worst-case scenario?
It's the, it's the worst case that the city or the county will experience. It's capped. It puts the onus back on the developer. If there are costs in excess of that, he has to simply absorb those costs.
And so someone goes in and then they, they make sure it's, it's clean, right?
Well, you'll have testing consultants on site during the entire process.
Okay.
Literally, each bucket of dirt that comes up, a tester will say, that's clean, you can use it on site, or that's clean, it can be removed off-site, or that's dirty, it definitely has to go off-site. And dirty soil has to go to what's called a Class II landfill, which that's where the real high costs come in.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, obviously, I'm not familiar, and I know probably a lot of people listening aren't either, but yeah, that's, that's really interesting. So you're hoping that there's more clean dirt in there, I would expect. So it could be less. You're just looking at worst-case scenario.
Recapture would be less as well.
Thank you for explaining that. Really look forward to.
It's our goal to get the costs as low as possible, and it's the goal, the city's goal as well, because it's less dollars that are going out. The recapture period would be shorter and the dollars would be less. So it's our goal to, to minimize those costs.
Yeah. And of course, we're next to the river with groundwater. Groundwater everywhere is important, especially to the river. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, just wanted.
Councilmember Howser.
Construction begins in late spring or early summer. Mr. Bandit, will there be an effort on the part of the city to work with the residents on that area and make certain that they're aware as to what's happening? And, and is there going to be a prohibition on where the trucks can go in and out if they're hauling that much material out? Is, is that something that we can rely on the city to notify and enforce?
Absolutely. And when we have the discussion of the Plan Commission and at the Brownfield Authority, we committed to that. So there will be a flyer, a website dedicated to this project. Like when we do our own projects, because we're going to make sure that, that there's, I think, last guess was 350 trucks have to come out of there, and they're not going to go around First Street to Harding, out to Liversmore. So we will keep everybody informed because we don't want any surprises for anybody.
Thank you.
If I may address that as well, Mr. Howser. We have what's called a pre-construction meeting with the city, and at that time, we'll establish construction routes that the contractors, including the truckers, know that they have to follow those routes. Those routes will be posted. So it's a very documented and well-thought-out process.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Vixen.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. We look forward to you building.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Yeah, thank you, Jessica. On the call. Next, we have a discussion report from the city attorney regarding counsel's request to consider a potential action plan regarding marijuana regulations. So just want to say, before I turn it over to the city manager, this was just a talk about process, so we don't get caught up again. We want to know everything we didn't know before. And I, I think the people on this council were some of the most ardent, no marijuana on Main Street people in the entire city. But we felt like it was our, our duty to do due diligence just to see what the processes are and what we can do better to not have to go through that situation again if possible. So, Mr. City Attorney, thank you for this report.
Yes. So I, obviously, it's, it's kind of a lengthy report with the different options and, and the, the history and, but for the benefit of, of those who don't have it in front of them, in, in November of 2018, city council passed an ordinance that completely prohibited any marijuana businesses in the city of Rochester, period. And the, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act gave the cities that ability to do that. So that was always a, you know, medical marijuana came around first, as you recall, and, and so it was, if you don't regulate it, then someone's going to put it somewhere you don't want it. So the city actually, at one point in time, had a medical marijuana ability to have those in certain areas and mostly in the industrial areas. And then when this act came out, then it, it gave the cities the ability to just flat-out prohibit marijuana. So the city jumped on that, said no marijuana in the city. And it was peace in Rome for until, until 2023.
Pax Romana, is that what you're trying to say?
So, so then, as the city residents know, then the, there was a group out of. So, so then, as the city residents know, then the, there was a group, out of Citigroup, that came in and tried to push a, a version of a charter amendment and a, an ordinance amendment that would essentially undo the prohibition that the city had in place and put, and would have up to three established marijuana retail establishments in the retail areas. So that, obviously, as the city knows, those two, the charter amendment and the ordinance amendment, were defeated 89% no's and 87% no's, which I believe is the highest no vote in, in Michigan on those. So, so city.
Yes.
So city council, in doing their due diligence and not advocating, I did not feel any advocating coming from the members up here, but said, okay, what, what are our options? Do we need to do anything? Should we do anything? What should we be thinking about? And so I, I put together just kind of, here's the things that you can do at, at this point. One is, certainly is to do nothing, because the, the ballot measures failed, the prohibition in the city ordinance is still in place. When I talked to a number of people before the election, and I, I, we were discussing whether or not groups would come in, try to come in again if this measure failed. You know, maybe, you know, for whatever reason why people voted against it, what if they tweaked that, made it more palatable, what, you know, what? And, and they said, one of the, the main things that people will look at in, in whether they'll come back again is, if it was a 51% no, then there's, then they would be encouraged to come back. 89% was, is, is a big, is a big statement by the city. Now, obviously, city council probably has a feel, but they aren't for sure. Maybe, you know, people would have been different, voted differently if, if it wasn't in the retail area. What if it was proposed downtown, or excuse me, down in the, say, industrial or other areas that may be, you know, less offensive, if you're offended by, by these things? So, so one of the options that the city has, of course, is to do nothing and let the prohibition continue and, and see what happens. The, the city could, I will say, get ahead of it, because it's really not something to get ahead of necessarily, but you, you could discuss, maybe we should have an avenue for marijuana retail establishments in the city. We didn't like it in the retail, but maybe we'll, we would, let's kick it around to see if there's another place in the city that would be palatable. And so the city, so city council could direct the planning commission to, to look at other options. Obviously, you know, I, I wouldn't think there would be retail, because the, the voters spoke on that, but maybe there's other ones to kick around. And then it would go through the normal process, the, the ordinance process, which would be planning commission, if it's in the zoning, which I think most of it should be in, in the zoning, because you want to control where it would be zoned. And then it would end up coming up to city council for consideration. But I think, since it's such a big policy issue, I think that city council would, should really take the first crack at it, if you're interested in, in considering real legislation, in telling planning commission, giving them some type of message, like, we want you to kick it around, but here's kind of the parameters that, you know, would be go, no-go, you know, for us to even look at it. Just to, so they're not spending a, a bunch of their time in meetings discussing something where you would say, well, we didn't want it anyway. So, you know, be careful with the message when you push it, you know. If, if you're not willing to entertain something, then you wouldn't need to send it to planning commission. The third option that I, that I kind of thought about was what the city of Birmingham actually did, which was, well, let's put something on the, on the ballot to see. Let's, let's carve it to, to put something in place and leave it to our voters to see if they vote yes or no on what we think would, might be an option. And so that's what they did at this last election. And that, the Birmingham voters voted no 73.5% no vote in there. In fact, the information I received were there were eight marijuana ballot measures this past election, and all eight went down. So, so there's, so what are the next steps? So summarize, you can do nothing and just, you know, it's prohibited. Now, under, none of these options, the, the one thing that I can't do is promise that another group won't come in regardless of what you do. If you do nothing, someone else can come in and say, we want to put this on the ballot measure, just like this last one. If you adopted an ordinance, that doesn't preclude someone from coming in on the ballot. Or if you put something on the ballot, it's only good until the next ballot comes in. And so I, what I can't do is to tell you that whatever option you select, that no one can come, come through and, and undo or put something different in place. You know, if, if you put something in place and it passes either at city council level or by the voters, you know, would that be a disincentive for another group to try to get their version in? Maybe, you know, because if there's already something there, they're going to say, oh, wait, now they, now they even have something there. They didn't want it in retail. City council voted to put it in District X, whatever X would be. And, you know, that's probably all that the residents could handle or would handle. So it may be a disincentive, I don't know. You're, you're trying to predict what groups that aren't your, well, could be your residents, but in this case, it wasn't. So I'm hoping that this was kind of helpful to you, to kind of see, here's your, here's the different paths forward. So it's really, obviously, a policy issue that city council can look at tonight, can chew on it, can come back, and whatever you want to do from this point. There's no recommendation to take any action from, from administration on this.
So thank you for that. So I thought for tonight, we would just not get into a big marijuana debate. We'd just talk about process, and it could be just talk about it in another meeting, agreeing not to do anything tonight. I mean, just in general, what are we going to do next? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. That was very easy to read and very understandable. So I appreciate you doing that. I think it's important to have out in the public that we did do that, that there are different options. But definitely what you said, I think, at the end makes, no matter what we do, they can come back and put it back on the ballot.
That's right.
And so, without debating the whole thing, I feel like the community spoke at a very high level. And I think that it might even get confusing if we do that, and then it goes on the ballot, and they'll think, well, we already passed that it couldn't hap, you know. I, I just think that, that's just my, but thank you for all the research and that we're able to discuss it.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate it, because I, I had been a proponent for you to, to research this. And I know that it got a little confusing for people, like, why would you research it? But the, the other thing was, initially, we were getting information from the community when this first got on the, was getting on the ballot, was that, why didn't you get ahead of it? And I'm glad, now we know. There's no way to get ahead of it. And the way that the city council I was not on at the time got ahead of it was to vote no and prohibit it. So, and, I mean, if there's no way to get ahead of it, I agree with Councilmember Jones, is that this is a dead issue. And, and it just, we know now what, we didn't, we didn't know all of the information that you, you did propose. So thank you.
If I may, Councilmember Hauser.
Jeff, again, I appreciate you putting this in memo form. It was very easy to understand. And like you were saying, none of us up here have a crystal ball, and none of us can see what is in the future as it pertains to what these groups are going to do. You would think, conventional wisdom would say they lose 89%, 87%. They probably take their, you know, toys and go home and go somewhere else. But they're, got a lot of money, and they've got a lot of resources. And, you know, they're probably inclined to do it again. But again, none of us know for certain. I don't want to get into the debate about it, you know, do we do something, do we not do something? But I do think it probably warrants another conversation at another meeting, at least, just to make sure we're all aligned. Again, I'm kind of hedging one way, but nevertheless, I think it would be worthwhile to have another conversation about this, once we've had an opportunity to digest this and maybe talk a little bit more privately with city attorney or, or city administration.
Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, City Attorney, for, made it very digestible and easy to understand. And I also just want to thank the citizens of Rochester. You guys made your voice known and heard, and you understand that there is that opportunity again that may come before you, but I'm certain you will make a good, educated decision. Thank you. Mayor Protem Sylvia.
I will weigh in as well. So again, thank you. Thank you for the document. The number that keeps ringing in my mind is this is now a $3 billion industry in Michigan, past $3 billion. So I think the residents have spoken very loudly. I think council has taken the best defensive action we can take by prohibiting retail in our, our city limits. And, but I also know that they could come back again, so we just have to continue to educate residents that it may come back in their court again to say no again. But from council's standpoint, I think our position is, is clear where we're at right now with our ordinances.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I'd just like to weigh in. To me, the big, the big numbers, 89%, 87%, and I'm willing to let that ride out there as our message for, you know, to otherwise note it. So is there consensus that you want to talk about it one more time? Do we have a vote on it or not?
I mean, I feel like, not to.
No.
I feel like we, I feel like we're already all aligned. So I think that, yeah, yeah.
So ahead now there, we don't need to discuss this anymore, and we stick with our current no.
Okay. And, and I would keep you posted as to any developments in there, if something changes and, like, ooh, here's an idea, or here's a thought. I, I, I'm your advocate. I, I will bring it back to you.
Please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, if I may, for just a, to that extent, Ms. O'Connor, if you're at the desk and someone comes in with a big stack of petitions, I'm sure you will let us know, right?
Oh, yeah. We're going to know before then.
Yes.
I think, I think our people are out on the streets, and they're going to let us all know if they are being approached to sign one thing.
Yeah.
But that, that last one was pretty, pretty under the radar.
Yeah.
It was very.
You don't get us twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're.
I'm sorry, Jeff, just to be clear. The city, we could do what Birmingham did, and we could put a ballot on, or a measure on the ballot, and they could vote, but that still wouldn't restrict or prohibit another group from coming in. So you just, it's this big circular thing, right?
Because we could, we could put on a city charter amendment to say no, but then someone could do something to override that override.
Get enough signatures to go on.
And to the reverse of that, if, if, let's say that this last one had passed, for instance, there could be another ballot measure to change that. So, you know, it, it's just a lengthier process when you go through the ballot, right? It's, it's harder to, actually, it goes to an election, which only happens a certain amount of time. So it, it's, nothing's ever, you can't ever make a law that you can ever change, if that makes sense. So whether it's a citizen initiated or not.
And I think that's, if, if this happens again, if they come back, that's really the message we have to convey to the public, that there's nothing. You could do 10 different things, and nothing is going to stop a petition group from coming in and trying to do this.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Don't sign the petitions.
Don't send, yeah. There you go. Thank you.
I can't say that.
Doesn't take too many, though. That's the problem.
Right.
Uh, City Attorney, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Um, next is a receipt of the check register. Are there any questions, comments? No. Honored reports from the various boards and commissions. First is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Jones?
So I could help with that, Mr. Mayor. She, she didn't know she was.
Dear me, I don't have a report.
There's a short, there's a short window between her being appointed in the meeting, so.
Well, you are on there. Come here.
I feel they had a meeting without telling me. I feel you probably were correct, because I was there.
She would be at the next meeting. So I was there representing Councilwoman, so it wasn't her fault. So first thing we did was we had an election. Jeanne Crupp is our new chairman. She was the vice chair. Rachel Williams did a spectacular job. Literally, she's the greatest communicator, always kept us in the loop. And she's staying on the board, but stepped down as chair. And then Laura Murphy stepped up to be the vice chair, again, a great communicator. And Sue Batula remained the secretary. So we got that worked out. Rachel continued to chair this meeting until, to get through it. We went over where we were in the '23 budget, and they're doing great. Actually, they, they've actually overperformed because of fundraising and donations with the pollinators, et cetera. So they're in great shape there. Then we had a quick goals and objectives, not a quick, but a goals and objectives meeting to talk about different things that they wanted to collaborate with. And we kept talking about, they become an organization that just doesn't call City Hall and say, hey, can you mulch all the beds and the trees? No, they, they're hands-on people, and they've been really, really wonderful. So that, in your report, your package this evening is their agenda, and some of the things that they're going to come and talk to us about when it's their shot at the budget meeting. So it's a good meeting. There's a lot of energy on that committee. Deb, you'll really, you'll enjoy them. They're, it's high energy. It's good people. So that's it.
She did give me, actually reached out to me, and she gave me the dates of the meeting. So I will be at the next one.
Gotcha.
I was like, man, I was sure you were on that committee.
Yes, who was?
No, I, I, they just had had the meeting after, after it all happened.
Okay. Next, we have a report from the Rochester Community House. Mayor Protem Sylvia.
Thank you. Mayor, if we could move this to the next city council meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting was pushed to tomorrow since Alan was not feeling well.
Oh, so he's feeling better?
Feeling better. We saw him Saturday. He's feeling better.
All right. Next is a receipt, a report from the Pink Creek Trailways. Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items we discussed. First was our annual review of license agreements on the trail. I think we currently have 10 for easements of the, of the property in conjunction with some businesses. But we also talked about, we've experienced a few more encroachment issues, where residents actually just build things on the, on our land, whether it's a bridge to get to the trail or a beach. So what we would like to do, we're, we're proposing, we'll bring something back to the city that we can maybe post on the website, to say, okay, this is trail land. You can't just go and do what you will with it. So we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
All right.
And then we began our annual goals discussion, just to revise any projects we were going to address this year. Obviously, the southeast Rochester property is still one of the primary goals on the trail, and that potentially could get done this year, I think. So we'll keep you posted there. That was it. Very good. And again, congratulations on being the chair of the Pink Creek Trailway Committee. Next, a report from the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority. Rara, Councilmember Jones.
Yes. So we had a meeting last week, and it was in January. They always have all the directors, department heads give their reports, and not a ton to report. All is going well. The only really opportunity has to do with dance, and the woman handling that has come up with some great ideas with Girl Scouts and Brownies and earning a patch and bringing them in to do something in the dance world. I mean, they've got some very creative ideas. Their adaptive program is unbelievable, how they work with the special needs kids. With that in mind, they have different fundraisers. And Saturday, they had a bowling fundraiser for SCAMP, which is their adaptive camp in the summer, a great program. And I bowled, not well, but I went.
Oh, you did. That's right.
And I did win a silent auction, which is why I went. So, yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Downtown Development Authority. Councilmember Trent.
All right. So it was Wednesday, January 17. And one of the, of an interesting line item was the social district discussion was brought up again. And if anyone doesn't know what that is, it's a governing body of a local government unit. They designate a social district within its jurisdiction that contains a commons area in which the patrons of qualified licensees may consume alcohol. And a lot of cities have this, and they are, and we would not be the first, so there's been a lot of information about how they are very, they're very good for the downtowns, and they, they put signs up, and they're highly regulated or watched. And that was what they had discussed, and they brought, and it was, it started with a pandemic, and they were so popular and that they were, they continued, they continued those districts. So Attorney Crutt is going to join or come to the February DDA meeting to walk up through the process, how that works. There was also, infrastructure projects were brought up, and for the next, and it's $15 million, and projects which include paving the surface lots, which had a discussion as well. And it will be spread across multiple years and prioritized by condition, condition and need. There was an end-of-year recap with the, the great end-of-year winter events that we had, including Lon Yap. There were 16 events were held over the holiday season from November 1 through December 31. They also showed the article from Wall Street Journal about how it helps, it's not just for fun, it helps economic development. for fun, it helps economic development. And City of Rochester was featured there. The Frost Festival was held last Friday and Saturday and that was very popular and I went and there were a lot of people and a lot of ice sculpture that I, that were beautiful and frozen. I'm glad to see they were frozen. Last few years they have not. So then they set the date and time for the goals and objectives meeting on, for Wednesday, January 24th. And that is that. Any questions?
I have a question regarding the social district. So when, during the pandemic, that was kind of a state-driven and we were able, any municipality was able to accept that, right? There was no fee associated to it, it was just if you adopted it. I don't even remember if we voted on it or not or. Well, I think to. But are there fees now associated to the social district?
It, it is a city-driven, I don't know if there's any fees at all, but it, it was, it was kicked around at the time, it was so unknown, you know, just we looked at different areas where it could have it and then it was just deemed at that point, I think with former chief and with Christie and just kind of like, it just didn't seem to work like where they're planning on it. But more is, now there's been experience with other, with other communities that I think has driven the renewed interest, but I, I, I don't hear a ton of them out there, but there are some out there that, that are doing it and.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So what really changed was back then, it was make a corral, have a cup from, that says this district and you walk out there. Now, basically, all of the ones that exist now are the whole entire DDA and it's one, it's a, it's a stamp that goes on a cup, let's say, so you can identify where they got it. It's really just to backtrack, where did you get that from, make sure they participated in it, but there's not city funds, I know, that get taxed on it. So it's really morphed into something bigger, so we're going to explore that.
And I think the former police chief was against it, which was at that time.
And I'll say I was too, as economic development, just as a family, but I agreed to be quiet now.
Okay.
So we're, we're exploring.
Okay, that, that was my question then. So would that have to come before us?
Absolutely.
Okay, so there'll be a lot of research involved in it. Okay.
I thought I'd just go ahead and bring it up.
No, I'm, I'm glad you.
Just get it out there. No surprises up here.
No surprises.
No surprises.
Is that it?
That's it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the goals and objective is Wednesday and it was moved from the DDA offices to city hall.
That's right.
If anybody's interested.
If anybody's interested, it's open and.
I think the chairs will probably be more comfortable here.
Yes, and there's plenty of room. If anybody wants to join us, if they can't get enough of us.
All right, thank you. Next is a receipt, a report from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mayor Protem.
No, it's, it's, no, it's me again. Yeah, so, yeah, there's a, there's a couple of meetings. The first one was the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Monday, the 15th, to discuss the agenda and review the information that was presented at the first goals and objective meeting on Saturday, January 20th. So we sat, we went through the overview of the budget and that would be projected through 2027. So we did that on the 15th, so we had the first goals and objectives on the 20th, which covered the central, which was a central theme revolved around progress, leadership as they, as the city works to mitigate surprises and the city continues to maintain a balanced budget. They, the city council met or it's will meet when, on the 15th, and we did meet on the 27th, so it's all combined here. We met, we, we met with the city manager, treasurer, Anthony Maggio, Marcy Marai, Maury Wa, Maury Waaki and deputy, who was the deputy finance director and deputy treasurer, and the department heads to review any additional budgetary needs that they had or they saw. So it was really the staff and then the, the city manager just giving the city really a nice overview of everything that's happening in the budgets. We had a, we had a lot to think about when we left and I was really impressed with how I was and I know others were, how hard that the city manager and staff worked beyond everything else that they have to do to put through, show us this presentation and give us what we need when the city comes back. City council will come back for the second goals and objective meeting, which will be on February 24th. It was very positive, they had some exciting ideas for the city as well, so stay tuned. It was, and also, they did mention it, Rochester Community Schools Admin Building and, but the department heads also were very thorough and very carefully presenting what they might see as additional needs coming up or asked, knowing that they won't get it all, but they wanted us to see everything that they were looking at too for their specific departments. So the city council has a lot to think about and we will give their, our input on February 24th, which is the next meeting, like I said, and we just basically, how much money do we have and how do we prioritize allocating additional funds over the general funds for the, for the projects around the city? So that's my, that's it.
Okay. Now we're on to public comment. Is there any further public comment in the audience? Okay. Onto general miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
No, thank you, Councilmember Trent, I couldn't say any better. Thank you for all the kind words after the meeting, staff kind words back to you, to be honest with you. It was like that, that felt good, that felt really good for the whole meeting. And some of that's uncomfortable to talk about, I know, but thank you for the folks that showed up in the public, so I, I thought that's a huge day, it gets everybody fired up. We have a lot of good things to work on and for me, as the economic development side, to know what's coming down the pipe is very exciting. And we'll have a chance to take a look at those projects and hopefully stabilize our tax base as we move forward. So thank you again to everybody, it was, it was a great day. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just a reminder that the window to accept letters of interest for the vacant city council's spot is still open until January 31st, which is next week. You just have to email it to me. We have received three so far. I forwarded those on to you as soon as we got them, so that'll be on your agenda on the February 12th meeting.
Correct.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Nothing else to add other than go Lions. And I did ask Christie if there's any way we could change the lights in town to blue, Honolulu blue. And apparently we don't have that features in our lights, but you know.
Oh, my gosh. Everyone else is turning their buildings blue.
There's never been a need before.
Right, we never needed this before. That's true, that was probably absolutely.
So that is all.
Councilmember Sage.
Nothing to say, sir.
Councilmember Jones.
I just want to thank the DDA for what they do. I don't know if every, if that was from them, I think the bingo card, did anybody get that?
Yeah, that was from them, yeah.
I mean, creativity is unbelievable, so thanks to them and, and I know the event this weekend was not sponsored by them, but it was a great event. We wandered around also, so. I don't think it was DDA this weekend.
It was sponsored by them, but not Oakland County.
Not Oakland County, okay, all right.
Don't give them any credit.
So, no, I won't, no. DDA gets credit for both.
You appreciate it when they do and hoping they'll come back next year.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I just want to say, I am so excited to see on the planning commission tab, the development tracker that Jeremy Peckins under City Manager Banda put it there, so if you want to know any upcoming development projects, it is there and I am happy. And the other thing is, I was also happy to see the list, the, on the brown sheet of paper, I forgot to bring it, that Nick Banda, City Manager Banda, put together of all the stores and, in, in the downtown and the development and everything else. I don't know if that's available anywhere, but that is.
It's going to go on the website.
Yeah, that is, that's three pages. Yeah, it's amazing, 98% occupancy rate in, in downtown Rochester, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Houser.
Very quickly, I want to thank Alec and the DPW and his team, Jason, all those guys for our first real event of the weather. You know, the snow removal, all the streets looked great, everything was done well, so thank you. I know it's tough to get out there at 2:00 in the morning and plow the streets, so thank you, gentlemen, we really appreciate it. And then Frost Festival, when we were getting out of our meeting at 12:30 or so, it was pretty crowded, at least from my perspective on the drive home. So thank you for the DDA for putting that on, it was a really, really well-done event, so thank you.
Very good, thanks. I'd just like to say thank you to Nick and the department heads for the budget meeting. I thought I was very well-prepared, very organized. Thank you to the budget committee for helping with that as well. Special shout-out to Marcy helping me with some slides, I appreciate that at the last second. So that, that's all I have. Drive carefully on your way home and tomorrow, I just got on my phone that the Waterford schools are closed tomorrow, so they don't close very often, so it's probably going to be bad out there. So, yeah, so be careful out there, thank you.
Thank you, sir.